Oh, we do, Mayor. This is a very exciting announcement. We have a Christmas present for the citizens of Prescott. We got our report from PSPRS yesterday on our unfunded liability. Three years ago, we were sitting at $86 million in debt. Today, we are at $56 million in debt. We were 30% funded. Today, we are 58.5% funded. Had we not passed Prop 443, we would be $116 million in debt at this city. Instead, we went the other way. If you look at this chart, we would have been off the chart with our unfunded liability. But you can see what happened as a result of 443, the downward trend. So, we're going to pay this off, probably, fingers crossed, at least two years ahead of schedule. So, congratulations to the city and Merry Christmas. Yes.
I have one as well. I had the opportunity to go to a conference in Phoenix Saturday for the NAACP, and they gave the City of Prescott an award in appreciation for your bold and public stance against racism and inappropriate racist and divisive comments and behaviors. Thank you for valuing all citizens. NAACP Arizona State Conference, Charles Fanyel, President, December 7, 2019. So, it's very cool.
Very nice.
All right. Today, we'll have an invocation by Reverend Jay Wolter with First Congressional Church and the pledge led by Mayor Pro Tem.
Let us join together in prayer. We thank you, oh God, for the blessing of being able to live in this city. Thank you for the parade and lighting we saw last weekend, Akronite coming up. It's truly a blessed time to be here. And so, remind us that we are blessed to be a blessing. Guide and direct these council members as they face many challenges that come from the blessings of this city, the growth and all that goes with it. And so, give them your wisdom, we pray through your name. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Reverend. Let's do proclamations.
Roll call.
Roll call first.
Mayor Mangarelli.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Orr.
Here.
Councilman Blair.
Yes.
Councilman Good.
Here.
Councilmember Rusing.
Here.
Councilwoman Scholl.
Here.
And Councilman Sishka.
Here.
Recognition of Major Frank Schele Jr.
Come on. How are you?
I'm good. How are you?
Good. Good to see you. This is my good friend Betty, and there's no more of an advocate in our city for veterans, and particularly the history of our veterans. And really, she's done a masterful job of digging up facts and historical evidence of our veterans, what they did and all their awards. And she did a tremendous job in the library for a display. If you've not been to the library to see the display, it's absolutely amazing. And it's on Frank Schele, and we're going to do a proclamation today on Frank Schele Jr. And what I like about Betty is she always, she has no problem correcting me and keeping me in line.
Hold on, the display is down.
Well, the display is down, so. To my point. All right. This is a proclamation for Frank Schele Jr. Whereas Frank Schele Jr. was born in Phoenix on November 20, 1917, and moved with his family in the early 1920s to Prescott. And whereas his love for flight began at an early age, and in junior high school, he started the Prescott Junior Aeronautical Club, and in high school, he was known as the Flying Cowboy. Whereas, following graduation in 1935, Frank attended University of Arizona, Go Wildcats, for two years, and was eventually accepted in the Army Air Corps. He completed basic training and was designated Second Lieutenant in 1939. Whereas, during his years of service in World War II, Frank flew over 200 missions and destroyed seven Japanese planes. Am I correct so far? Okay. Good. Whereas, in 1942, Frank became commander of the 74th Fighter Squadron, and shortly thereafter was promoted to Major. And whereas, as a reconnaissance specialist, Frank flew legendary medal-winning missions, including an assignment in Hanoi in 1942 that provided invaluable intelligence to the military, and a project that same year along the coast of China, for which he was awarded this Distinguished Flying Cross Award. And whereas, on the anniversary of the events of Pearl Harbor, December 7, 1942, the life of Prescott's legendary aviator Frank Schele Jr. was cut short when he crashed into a mountain north of Kaming during an 800-mile reconnaissance mission. And whereas, on October 20, 1947, Major Schele is laid to rest with full military honors at Mountain View Cemetery in his hometown of Prescott. Now, therefore, I, Greg L. Mangarelli, Mayor of the City of Prescott, Arizona, do hereby recognize Major Schele's service to our nation, express pride that he called our community his home, and honor the life he lived. That's for you. Would you like to say what you wish? Of course you would.
Thanks. I just want to let everybody know that all of our men on the monument here are all heroes, but they're not just a name on a plaque or a wall. They all have a story to tell, and a good example was this one of Major Frank Schele Jr. And thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Betty.
Wreaths Across America. Proclamation, Wreaths Across America. Whereas, Wreaths Across America is a nonprofit organization that began in 2006 as an extension of the Arlington National Cemetery Wreath Project. And whereas, the project was originally started in 1992, when wreaths donated by the Warchester Wreath Company were placed on the headstones of our nation's fallen heroes during the holidays. And whereas, the goal of Wreaths Across America is a mission to remember the fallen, honor those who have served, and teach children the value of freedom. And whereas, family members, friends, and citizens of all ages will volunteer their time to adorn the grave sites with Christmas wreaths in a stirring tribute to the courage and sacrifice of those who have guarded and preserved our nation's freedom throughout history. And whereas, Wreaths Across America ceremonies will be held throughout the state at participating cemetery locations to gratefully remember and honor our veterans and to thank them once again for their service to our country during this holiday season. Therefore, Greg L. Mangarelli, Mayor of the City of Prescott, Arizona, does hereby declare Saturday, December 14, 2019, as Wreaths Across America Day in Arizona. There you are. Would you like to say a few words?
I'd really like to thank the City of Prescott for recognizing wreaths. My name is Darren Driggs. I'm the location leader for Wreaths Across America at the Prescott National Cemetery. This will be happening on Saturday, the 14th. It's coming up. The weather's looking great. Please come out if you have time, because most of you know our cemetery is very small. There is no parking at the cemetery, a lot of construction equipment and so forth. But we're working with local agencies that are, and the VA, that are doing transportation from the VA hospital. So, come out early. The transportation starts at 8:30 and runs till 9:50 when we stop it. If there's a bunch of people there, I will delay the ceremony, because what's important is all of you are there to partake in this. I can tell you, I can never put it into words just how moving it is. I attended my first one in 2011, and I haven't been able to let it go. So, please come out. I swear, if you do, you'll never miss another one. So, thank you very much. And Sherm is with our Honor Guard. We've been working together since 2012, when I first took this over. So, it's a, we have a great team that really puts us together. And getting it into the community, one last little thing before I get going, because you never want to give me a mic, is share this with everybody in the community. It's open to everyone, especially our children. So, if you can reach out, just share, hey, you know, what are you doing at 10 o'clock on the 14th? Come on out. We're going to play some wreaths and honor our veterans. So, we would really appreciate that. It's all about getting the word out there. So, thank you very much. Sherm?
Thank you very much. It's been good to see you.
Appreciate you. Congratulations. All right. Let's move on to presentations. Item 7A, please.
Recognizing APS and celebrating the fifth anniversary of the Willow Creek Dog Park.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. My name is Linda Nichols, and I'm the winner of the Benefall Dream Dog Park Contest, where Prescott received a 2.3-acre dog park for the dogs and their owners. In order to, for Prescott to receive this gift, entries had to include a picture along with an essay, a two-minute homemade video, and votes from a panel of Benefall judges, as well as online votes from people across the country. The park's theme was based on and dedicated to the firefighters. The grand opening of the park was held on December 10 of 2014, so today, we celebrate the park's five-year anniversary to the very day. If you can look at this picture, you can see that the dog park was just a fence and dirt and weeds, a lot of weeds. And now, today, it looks more like on the right. And Arizona Public Service owned this property and was leasing it to the city at the time. And the property, in order for us to do the park, had to be owned by the city. So, Prescott and the surrounding communities, including the Four-Legged Furry Friends, and trying to hold a big event with all these dogs around was a lot of fun, all came together to celebrate the grand opening. However, in all the excitement, we overlooked one thing. Had not this one thing occurred, there would not be a Willow Creek Dog Park located in Prescott. So, I'll tell you more on that in just a minute. Kelly Tolbert, from the Parks and Recreation Department, is going to let you know just how popular the park is and the next steps that we plan for the park. Kelly?
Thanks, Linda, and thanks, Council and Mayor. Our park is one of the busiest parks in our system, our dog park, and we estimate it having about 450,000 visits annually, and that's including dogs and people. So, you can imagine the maintenance that goes on out there and the enjoyment and the social benefits that occur through the socialization of the dogs. Without APS's generous donation, I think I'm supposed to click here, which was valued at nearly $80,000, you know, five years ago, we wouldn't have this beautiful park today. So, we wanted to invite the city to talk a little bit about what's happening next with the dog park. We are looking to continue to improve the property with some commemorative bricks and stepping stones. There's preskottogpark.com will have all the information for you if you want to refer to that in the future, but we're just continually looking to improve that experience for our visitors and our guests. And then, Linda is going to talk about the purpose of us being here today.
So, Prescott's Willow Creek Dog Park would not exist today if not for the immediate cooperation and generous donation from Arizona Public Service. Within three months, APS legally donated the park to the city, again, a requirement in order to locate the park in Prescott. With all the excitement at the time, it was in December and there was a lot going on, there was an oversight. APS was never properly thanked for helping to make our dog park a reality. We're here today to write that oversight. So, with a thankful heart, with our community, from our community dogs, our dog owners, and many others, I would like to ask Mayor Mangarelli to read a letter of appreciation and award a certificate of thanks to Darla DeVille, please come forward, who is the Community Affairs Manager for APS, and Mackenzie Rogers, who is the Northwest Division Director. Come on up.
Well, it's a real privilege to recognize APS. And I can go on and on about the great partnership we have with APS, and these guys are always in our community, helping with different events, sponsoring what's going on in our city, very involved on committees, and we love their input. We love having them on board. If you remember the Hilton Garden Inn, APS was a huge part of making sure that that partnership or that project happened because of their partnership. So, anyway, so many great things. And here again, the dog park. And I didn't know about this, and what a great gift to our city. When you got the grant from Benefall, the city had to own the property. And what was really tremendous here, I think, is the time at which it took APS to do this, because many times, I mean, I'm in government, I understand how slow we go, and I think, you know, these things take time, yet in just a matter of weeks, APS was able to get this done. And that's really tremendous, and it really speaks to the depth of our relationship. And so, it's a real great pleasure and honor to be here today to present these certificates to Mackenzie and Darla. Arizona Public Service, on this fifth anniversary of the opening of Willow Creek Dog Park, the City of Prescott thanks you for your generous contributions. Thank you both so much.
Just one thing to add, that we are adding a bronze plaque to the entrance of the park that is in honor of their donation for the land that made the park possible.
Thank you for that. Let's move on to item 7B.
Yavapai Justice and Mental Health Coalition Reach Out Initiative.
Is this okay? Okay. Good afternoon, Mayor, Pro Tem Mayor, and Councilmembers. My name is Bea Thayer. I'm the Executive Director of the Yavapai Justice and Mental Health Coalition. I've been in this position for a year and a half, and I wanted to actually just come and introduce myself to you all, is pretty much the reason to be here, and let you know about this coalition and some of the partnerships and coordination that is going on within Yavapai County, within the City of Prescott. And we have this reach-out initiative that we've been working really hard on. We finally got some third-party data, and I just wanted to be able to share it. So, it's basically just an introduction and let you know a little bit about the coalition. The coalition, I am housed over at the Sheriff's Office, but it is a true coordinated community response to addressing the needs of unmet behavioral health needs for our community members, and especially those who intercept within the justice system. We have a fabulous Board of Directors. Chief Debbie Black is one of our Board of Directors, and a lot of the, some community members that are really important within your community, such as Jesse Hans, who runs the CCJ Homeless Shelter. We have other police chiefs, the college, we have service providers involved, the Justice Court as well involved, the Director of the Health Department, Leslie Horton. And that is just Sheila Polk, our county attorney, of course, mention her, Judge Napper. And that's just the board. The actual coalition is filled with folks from our school superintendent's office, child and family support services, the veteran services community, like I said, other treatment providers, the hospital. It's a really great group of folks who are looking at the fact that this is a system-wide collaborative need, where a lot of cogs, the cogs need to all kind of move together. And so, it's fabulous. Our mission is a healthy and safe community, and trying to really, really reach the folks in need, and how can we bring everybody together. So, one of the initiatives that is true collaboration is called the Reach Out Initiative. And what, you know, we've seen nationwide, not just in Yavapai County, but a lot of individuals with unmet behavioral health needs find themselves in jail, kind of out of population than the rest of the population. And they linger there longer. Once you're caught up in the justice system, for a lot of individuals, you're there a lot longer. And so, how can we actually support them by getting their, some of their needs met and connect them to service providers? And so, we have a slew of release coordinators who are able to screen folks who come in to the just, into the jail, and look at risk factors, unmet needs, and these are people who will be being released, but perhaps we can actually release them with a connection to services, try to get those unmet needs met, and so they don't come back into our system. And so, that's described a little bit more in the brochure. We've partnered with Northern Arizona University Center for Health Equity Research. We wanted some outside eyes looking at our data and seeing what is it that we're doing? Is it working? Where can we make some improvements? What can we do better? How can we steer this ship? So, the stapled piece is some information about their findings. And what we did on this data is data between folks who were booked in between March of 2018 and March of 2019, and then we waited in six more months and to see what that recidivism looks like. And the folks that did come through and got screened, we have some demographic information about their behavioral health risks and their substance abuse risks, and then other risk factors as well, such as unemployment, that's kind of a high one, folks who are veterans that could probably be reconnected back to the veteran services, people who are, do not have a safe place to stay, a safe place to sleep, and transportation, as well as safe transportation modes. And our recidivism rate for that population for new crimes was down to 16%. And what we were able to compare it to, because baseline recidivism rates is a little difficult to find in Arizona and across the nation, actually, but there were some DOC recidivism rates for new charges that were at 28%. So, right now, our first level of looking at data is 16% compared to the statewide DOC's recidivism rates at 28%. So, we're kind of chugging along in the right direction, and again, we're still working with our evaluators, and what can we do to enhance these services and continue working with individuals. Another piece that I want to definitely point out is our pre-arrest deflection program that is going on countywide. And what we're working with is our law enforcement, personnels, 911, first responders, who receive calls that don't necessarily mean a crime has to be, was committed, or perhaps the person doesn't need to be booked into jail, but in the past, they were getting booked into jail because that was a safe place that they can be. And so, with, you know, Prescott Police Department, the Sheriff's Office, with all of our law enforcement entities, learning mental health first aid training, crisis intervention training, how to recognize signs and symptoms, and then our fabulous behavioral health providers working alongside them, so Terrace Mobile Health, West Yavapai's Crisis Stabilization Unit, Spectra's Behavioral Health, and they have a mobile crisis unit as well, with all of them working together. For between calendar year 17 and calendar year 18, our jail bookings dropped drastically, pretty much to the same number that these behavioral health providers were getting referrals from law enforcement. And so, with this, with this system-wide collaboration, what we're aiming to do is really try to get these folks to the assistance that they need. We're still, of course, there's gaps out there, but we have fabulous resources in Yavapai County and in Prescott. And so, that's what part of the coalition's effort is, is how to make those processes work, how to make the gaps work, everybody trying to work together. So, that's pretty much why I was here, is just to introduce the coalition, let you know that we're there, and let you know that we're here to support you. If you have any questions, thank you for your time.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Actually, I have a comment. I've had the opportunity to chat with Leslie Horton and Sheila Polk and, you know, Chief Black. This is an amazing program. Once again, I think Yavapai County, City of Prescott, has shown a great model to turn things around, and I just really appreciate the coalition and working together. And all that you're doing, you're going to do the symposium on Thursday, and just lots of opportunity for people to understand where the resources are and to do a recidivism decrease to 16%. It's huge. So, thank you. Thank you for all that you're doing.
Thank you very much. And just to add on top of that, you know, there's entities in counties statewide, the Supreme Court, the Arizona Office of the Courts, they're looking at Yavapai County as how they can replicate this Yavapai model, and around the state and what it would take. And so, we're kind of in the spotlight. It's pretty fun.
Absolutely.
A little nerve-wracking, but kind of fun.
Well, very good. Thanks so much for being here. Appreciate it.
Thank you. You guys have a great holiday.
Thank you. Let's go to item 7C, please.
Native Air Recognition.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Members, Council. Mayor, would you mind joining us up front, please? First and foremost, I'm kind of gathering a theme out of this afternoon, and that's all about cooperation and collaboration. In the first responder world, gosh forbid if you ever need to use an ambulance, or worse yet, an air ambulance, but we've had a well-established partnership with Air Methods and Native Air, and I believe they'd like to recognize that continued partnership and those successes here today. So, with that, I'd turn it over to Emily, or whoever wants to offer their words.
Hi, my name is Erin Duncan. I actually grew up in Prescott. I've lived here my whole life, and for the last 20 years or so, I've worked as a paramedic in this community. And one of the things that has been mentioned over and over again is the word partnerships. We are really, really lucky, and it's a very, it's not a very common thing that we have such a good partnership with the ground crews that we have here in this community. I've been with Native Air for about seven years as a flight paramedic, and I am continually amazed at how professional and how well Prescott Fire and ourselves work together. It's a mutually beneficial partnership, and it's beneficial to us, obviously. It makes our job a whole lot easier, but more importantly, it's very beneficial to the people who live in this community, and that's what all of us do this job for. We know for sure that we do it for that reason, and every time that we have an interaction with Prescott Fire crews, we know that they're in it for the exact same reasons. So, we feel very lucky for that, and this community is very lucky to have them as well. So, we have this, and we just wanted to, we felt as though the photographer really captured the teamwork that happens here and kind of got it in one picture. So, we wanted to give that to you all. Nice.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Well, I'll just say, on behalf of the council, when you're in these rural areas, public health and safety, very, very important for us, and Native Air really is that bridge to certain types of care that are important to our people here in Prescott, because we're in these rural areas. And so, we thank you for being that vital link to typically Phoenix, but other places sometimes, and appreciate your partnership. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Let's move on to the consent agenda. Would any members like to pull anything from consent today? Councilman Good.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I'd like to pull item A, and for corrections, and item F.
Okay. Anything else pulled? Councilman Blair?
Item E.
Item E.
Thank you.
So, pulling items A, E, and F. And then, I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve consent agenda items A, 8A through 8H, accepting A...
E.
E.
And F.
F.
Second.
We have a motion second. Please vote. All right. Very good. Thanks for that. Let's move to item A. Councilman Good?
Yeah, I wanted to make a small correction on the voting minute meeting notes from November 12, referencing page 24, where it says, "I stated I agree with increasing affluent." And I do agree with increasing affluent. But we were talking about our water policy, where we were talking about increasing affluent to 60% of new connections, so that needs to be corrected. Also, on page 31 of the packet, when we were talking about the study session conducted on November 19, when we were referencing the... to be corrected. Also, on page 31 of the packet, when we were talking about the study session conducted on November 19th, when we were referencing the fire protection fee for structures on lots, and we actually agreed to apply the term "developed" lots, not built structures. And that may seem insignificant, but it does have a very specific impact because in our land development code, developed lots are specifically defined to include not only built structures, but even grading, trenching, and other activities. So it's important that that be accurately described as developed rather than built. So with those two corrections, I would move that we approve those minutes, subject to those corrections.
Second.
We have a motion, and second. Please vote.
Passes 7-0.
All right, let's move on to item E. Councilman Blair?
Here.
You?
I just thought it important to, we had a presentation at 1:00 meeting regarding all the wonderful things that are happening at our airport. And I just thought it deserved more than a brush of the consent agenda, not only to have Robin give the community that's listening on TV, but also to give the folks that work so diligently out there on this master plan and our consultant some recognition. So if you wouldn't mind giving us a Reader's Digest version of everything that's happening at the airport.
I thought you were going to get sentimental and talk about 19 years and all that stuff.
No, that's not me.
Robin, good to see you again.
Thank you. They're going to go ahead and pull up the presentation from earlier, and we will be going through it very quickly. Again, this is Robin Sabata, Airport Director. And good afternoon, Council and Mayor. Thanks for the time. So this is a very exciting time in the City of Prescott and the airport's evolution. And part of this is to look at the short, medium, and long-term planning that we're doing for the airport, and it also obviously benefits the community. So we have the opportunity to have Delta Airport Consulting, Doug Sander, here, and he's going to be going through this quite quickly. We did go in depth during the earlier session, but obviously, we can still entertain questions. So Doug, if you could join me up here, this would be great. Doug Sander?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers? Okay, so the Cliff Notes version. The team, Delta Airport Consultants, Tim Moningerian, and Nicholas J., Peeling Associates, started this 2016. This has been unusual process due to the extraordinary circumstances that have happened here at Prescott over the past 12 to 18 months. So we'll go through this really quickly, talk about the process, and then each elements of the master plan, as well as public disclosure map. So here's the process that we went through. Each time I was out, read a brief, went through these, completed different items. You see three items up there that have the word, that are kind of a different colored approval. Those are the items, the airport layout plan, the aviation forecast, and the critical aircraft that all require approval by the FAA. And I'll go into those more in a little bit. So the first part of the project was looking at airport inventory, the background of the airport, listing all, going through, looking, see what was at the airport as far as facilities and services. Down at the bottom, in the lower right, you can see a couple of the headlines, really, for the airport right now, as far as 44th busiest in the nation, as far as operations go, as well as the change from a non-primary to a primary commercial surface airport. Okay, so you switch to the overhead. Okay. So two of the items here, the design aircraft and the operations, the forecast operations that require FAA approval. We had two designer crafts, one for existing conditions, and one for future conditions, both of which have been approved by the FAA. Future conditions are for a larger aircraft, a 70 to 76-seat aircraft, typically the Embraer 171, 175 class. So a little larger than what is currently serving there today. The operations forecasts were for the base aircraft, or the aircraft that live at Prescott. It was also the operations, meaning takeoff or landings, that happened at the airport, as well as planements that the passengers that get on the aircraft. Over the past year plus, with SkyWest service, the passenger planements have dramatically increased from what the forecasts were. As you can see here, between 2016 and 2019, they went from around 3,500 up to over 27, closer to 28 at the end of this year, and forecast even higher next year. The original forecasts, which were based on the previous air carrier service, really did not show much of an increase. It actually showed us reaching that this year's level sometime around 2031. So big differences. And for the first time in my 20-plus years doing master plans, the FAA is actually allowing a second forecast to be completed as part of a master plan process. So very good news here for the city and the airport. Well, after the forecasts were approved by the FAA, thank you, we actually looked at what the actual airport needed to do to develop over the next 20 years to meet the demands and the needs of the community. Here, we divided up into three different phases, phase 1, phase 2, phase 3. You see 0 to 5, 6 to 10, 11 to 20. And these are projects that are needed to meet the demands of the airport during these timeframes. Some of these actually have shifted around recently due to the generosity of the FAA and the state, who provide additional funding for certain projects. Some of these will change, these are actually updated every year, the airport capital improvement plan is updated every year to see what's going on, where the funding is needed, and how progress is being made on certain projects. So these are what are planned over the next 20 years here at the airport. So after the facility requirements, we looked at alternatives to address these different scenarios. So extensions of the runway, both primary and the GA runway were looked at, different alternatives, how they were going to accomplish that, what would be the best for the airport. Also with, there was about eight or nine here that we looked at. All of these, we developed a preferred alternative to go forward with, except for the bottom one, Clubhouse Drive, that was actually dropped from the master plan, and only a study was included. But the actual depiction of that on the airport layout plan was removed. So here was the selected layout. We have the, let's see, can we get this mouse? There we go. So we've got the primary runway extension out from 7,600 feet to 10,000 feet. We have the secondary GA runway also being extended quite a bit, out from 4,800 feet to 6,200 feet. One of the primary reasons for that is, down in this area right here, there is runway incursion issues that the FAA is very keen on eliminating. So one of those projects, part of that is being completed, will be completed next year as part of the relocation of Taxway Charlie, will actually shorten the length of that runway. So in the long term, we do need to lengthen that to accommodate that additional shortening. Some other major elements are terminal improvements, a new terminal building, as well as parking being constructed up here near the existing terminal, which is right here. We have a proposed location for a new air traffic control tower, which will require additional study prior to implementation. And then in these areas with the orange boxes, we show lots of hangar development. Most of that will be accomplished by private developers. And that's just a possible scenario of what could go there. And then, of course, we show out here additional land acquisition needed for runway extension, as well as airport-compatible development. So with that chosen preferred alternative selected layout, we looked at costs and estimating of the funding. On the right side here, you can see the actual funding scenario based on the different sources. We show roughly $180 million total over the next 20 years, of which almost 145 is being funded by the FAA through their various funding sources. Then ADOT, almost $7 million, City of Prescott, almost $9 million, and then private development, close to $20 million. One thing to point out of that local, of that $8.7 million, 3.5 is dedicated to the terminal. So that leaves you, you know, five and a half, just over $5 million over a 20-year period. So very good return on investment as far as that goes. On the right side, you can see the different phases as far as funding of that $180 million pot. Most of it is in the first phase, has to do with the terminal building, the runway extensions, as well as a lot of safeties and standard projects need to be brought up to speed, and a lot of maintenance. There's a lot of pavement and lighting out there that needs to be maintained at the airport. And then airport layout plan, the actual drawing set that the FAA approves for Prescott, it involved 41 sheets. A lot of those sheets had to do with runway ends and the extensions, and the inner approach surfaces, and looking exactly what is close to the airport, and to help protect the airspace around that. The most important sheets on here are the airport layout plan, the airport data sheet, as well as the airport property map. And right here is the actual airport layout plan, very, very busy, lots of things the airport wants shown on here. Again, this is one of 41 sheets. The others aren't quite this busy, but it just shows you there was a lot of work put into this. There's a lot going on here at Prescott Regional Airport. Public Disclosure Map.
Thank you, Doug. So the public disclosure map is actually an Arizona revised statute requirement that we let the community know about the possibility of extensive overflight over the community. Actually, since 2001, you can see on the right-hand side that we actually have a copy of what was the airport influence area that was established back in July of 2001. And we have to give previous generations credit for having established this influence area, where all of these parcels in this area are required to sign an navigation easement prior to acquiring the parcel. So we came to you some time back and asked that you approve this initial airport public disclosure map, meeting the ARS statute requirements. Because of the extensive overflight that is in close proximity to the airport, and because of the nature of training activities, which is, in this case, more than 75% of all the activities that occur at Prescott Airport stay in the pattern. And as a result, there's extensive overflight in the area. So we moved to this new diagram, which is going to be, just shows a little bit more extensive disclosure area that includes 2.25 miles out from the edge of the departure ends of each runway. And as you can see, there's five jurisdictions shown in this map. There's the City of Prescott in purple, the Town of Prescott Valley in this sort of tealish color. And then we have Chino Valley and sort of the cream here. And this little peak goes right up here. The reason that there's a second set of dots across the top is this is projected runway extension, so there may be additional impact. And then the rest of this area in white is actually Yavapai County and a checkerboard of state land that occurs in close proximity to the airport. So this is actually just a way that we can communicate to folks. That coupled with some signage that we've done in the community really helps, particularly in rental areas, where folks may have not signed the disclosure map, but they're signing a one-year lease. And they should know that there is, you know, the impact of the airport nearby. There is one more thing we wanted to bring up. And that was that there are so many people that are involved in this process. And frankly, we want to thank the leadership of the council, thank you all the way through this process, as well as the master plan contributors. And you can see there's a number of individuals who have gone through master plan meetings, given individual consults, worked with us, like our Airport Advisory Committee. Earlier, we acknowledged several members of our Airport Advisory Committee. And I see Mayor Oberg, you're in the audience, and you are on the list. And thank you again for your support and your continued guidance. This is really generations that have wanted to see this airport get to this location. And it's so amazing that you have all brought this to this point. Thank you very much.
We also have Tom Giuliani, I think I see back here. Thanks for your help, too.
Tom, I didn't see you back there. Tom Giuliani is the Chair of our Airport Advisory Committee, and we're so pleased to have you here, and thank you for your help. It's been an amazing group that has really brought this forward. It's the vision of all of you, and frankly, a great airport team. I see we have Kristi Miller here. And I thank our consultant, Delta Consultant, and Doug, for your patience. We've made over 200 changes to the airport layout plan and the master plan in the last year alone. These normally are only two-year processes. The fact that this went to three years really reflects what's happening at this airport and this community at this really unique moment. So thank you for your leadership on this as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Robin. Councilman Blair?
Yeah, we had something happen yesterday you might want to talk about. And how big was that jet that landed out there?
Oh, okay. So a few people saw the American Airlines CRJ 700 that landed at Prescott. That is a 70-seat aircraft, which we could see in the future. Actually, 74 to 76 seats is our critical aircraft. I know we could all get real used to it. It was actually diverted here due to extreme weather conditions, and so they landed and fueled. It's because about a year ago, we set it up where Prescott couldn't be a diversion location for all of the SkyWest fleet. So we told them, anytime you want to bring in a 700, bring it on in. What was interesting is, when we brought that one in, there was a person from Prescott on board, and they let her get off here instead of flying down.
How cool is that, huh?
Yeah. So that was great. She had a big smile on her face. They got her bags.
Didn't have to parachute in.
Didn't have to. So this is the future for us. This is where we're at. So, and we did have initial site prep begin yesterday with a groundbreaking coming very soon on January 7th for our new terminal.
Very good. Well, thanks for that overview. I know those folks that weren't here for the study session, I'm sure appreciated the overview of the presentation. Robin, you and your team have done a tremendous job moving quickly on the whole plan here, and we're very, very pleased and proud of your work. So thank you so much.
Thank you. And I'm so pleased and proud of the airport team that are back there right now. They were the ones that cleared the snow during the last snow event. They're always there for the community. It's a team effort. Thank you.
Very good. I'll make one more mention on this. Mayor Protem started with our PSPRS unfunded liability, which is at $56 million. We would not be sitting here talking about an airport if it was not for Proposition 443 and getting the handle on that unfunded liability. We've already contributed, or earmarked, $3.5 million, as you know, for the terminal, which is a part of the $8.7 million up there on that one slide.
Yes.
And so I'm grateful for those folks that did that and supported that, because we wouldn't be looking at a new airport terminal and these improvements if it was not for the work on Prop 443. So thank you so much for those of you that did that, because I'm very excited about our airport and moving forward. With that, we'll entertain a motion.
Mayor? With that, I'd go ahead and like to accept the Prescott Regional Airport Interstate Love Field Master, Airport Master Plan, including the Airport Layout Plan, Revised Public Airport Disclosure Map.
Second.
We have a motion, and second. Please vote.
Passes 7-0.
All right. Thank you for pulling that. That was important. I appreciate it. Let's move on to item F. Councilman Good?
Thank you, Mayor. Looking at the Professional Services Agreement for our classification and total compensation study, I was reviewing the terms and conditions, and came over the term of the agreement listed as December 10th, 2019, until June 10th, 2019. So I don't know how we can have a term that goes reverse six months. I think we're probably referencing 2020, are we not?
Mayor members of the council, thank you. I'd like to recommend that we change the Professional Services Agreement and show the term of agreement as December 10th, 2019 to June 10th, 2020. And we'll make those appropriate changes and send out for signatures.
Very good. Therefore, I would move that we approve City Contract Number 2020-122 for the Total Compensation and Classification Study by Evergreen Solutions in the estimated amount of $47,025, subject to the amendment of the term of the agreement expiring on June 10th, 2020. Funding is available in the Human Resources Fund.
Second.
Motion, and second. Please vote. All right. Thank you for catching that, Councilman Good. We will move on to the regular agenda item 9A, please.
Approval of City Contract Number 2020-128 for the purchase of two 2020 Peterbilt automated side-load refuse vehicles from Rush Truck Center using Arizona State Contract Number ADPS 019-063234.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Mike Carr, Fleet Services. Sorry, I got a bit of a cold going on, so bear with me here. Fleet Services, working in conjunction with the Solid Waste Division, is requesting authorization to purchase two new automated side-load refuse collection vehicles. One new ASL will replace vehicle number 1321, and the other will be a new addition to the fleet, which was in the FY19 rate study for the Solid Waste Division. The two new ASLs will consist of a 2020 Peterbilt refuse chassis and a weighing curb tender side-load body. The replacements were reviewed and approved by the Fleet Asset Review Board for FY20. Vehicle replacement considerations include the cost for repairs far exceeding the vehicle's value, and that the vehicle is vital to daily operations for the Solid Waste Division. The Solid Waste Division utilizes the ASL collection vehicles to serve over 31,000 commercial and residential containers citywide. These vehicles require regular maintenance to ensure reliability and maximum useful life. As they age, key components fail, requiring a lot of downtime and replacement for the vehicles. Generally, we try to replace these vehicles when they're approaching 100,000 miles or at a suggested life cycle of seven to eight years. This vehicle, currently 1321, is 11 years old and has over 105,000 miles on it, and is in need of extensive repairs to keep it on the road. Vehicle 1321 will be sold at the city's next scheduled auction. Funding for these purchases are part of the Solid Waste FY20 budget, and are intended to be financed. The different financing options are being reviewed, and we'll... This vehicle, currently thirteen twenty-one, um, is eleven years old, and has over a hundred and five thousand miles on it, and is in need of extensive repairs, uh, to keep it on the road. Vehicle thirteen twenty-one will be sold at the city's next scheduled auction. Uh, funding for these purchases are part of the Solid Waste, uh, FY twenty budget, and are intended to be financed. The different financing options are being reviewed and will be brought back to Council for approval before the vehicles are delivered, and with that, I'd be happy to try to answer any questions.
All right, thank you for that. You have a cool job, you get to buy big trucks.
It is fun, they're more expensive than a Ferrari or Lamborghini, so.
Questions, comments from the council? Any public comment?
No, Mayor.
Uh, if not, we'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve City Contract Number two zero two zero dash one two eight.
Second.
Motion in second, please vote.
Passes seven zero.
All right, uh, let's move on to item nine B, please.
Approval of City Contract Number two thousand twenty dash one twenty-seven for the purchase of one two thousand twenty Peterbilt automated front-load refuse vehicle from Rush Truck Center using Arizona State Contract Number ADPS zero one four dash zero six three two three four.
All right, again, working with the Solid Waste Division, we're requesting authorization to purchase a new automated front-load, um, side, solid waste collection vehicle. Um, this vehicle will replace, replace vehicle number eleven fifty-two, um, the new AFL will consist of one two thousand twenty Peterbilt refuse chassis, and one McNeilus front loader body. The replacement was reviewed and approved by the Fleet Asset Review Board for FY twenty. Um, the Solid Waste Division utilizes AFL collection vehicles to service over eleven hundred commercial and residential customers citywide. Um, as before, these vehicles require a lot of maintenance to keep them on the road, safe, and clean. Uh, vehicle twelve eighty-nine is an eleven-year-old front-load vehicle with a hundred and forty-two thousand miles and nineteen thousand five hundred fifty hours. Um, it's in need of a front valve stack replacement, and hydraulic system is in need of major repairs. Uh, the cost of repairs are not worth doing at this time to keep the vehicle going, so, uh, again, purchase of the, purchase of the vehicle is funded through the Solid Waste FY twenty budget, and is intended to be financed, the different financing options are being reviewed, and will be brought back to Council for approval before the vehicles are delivered. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, any questions, comments from the council? Any public comment?
No, Mayor.
Entertain a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve City Contract Number two thousand twenty dash one two seven.
Second.
Have a motion in second, please vote.
Passes seven zero.
All right, thanks, Mike. This, uh, closing quote comes from Ralph Waldo Emerson. Do not go where the path may lead, go instead where there is no path, and leave a trail. This meeting is adjourned.
Right.